...
Their people and the pets. Now therefore, I, Randy Gorm, Mayor of the City of Jacksonville, Texas, on behalf of the City Council and our wonderful citizens, do hereby accept his gracious donation and commit those funds to further in the care of animals to honor the legacy of Mr. Stephen Franklin Worsham. Signed this the 12th day of November, 2024. I knew Steve growing up, and he was a great, great guy, great citizen, great love lake. So that's so nice that he would do that. Appreciate it. Our next item is citizen participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns from the citizens. We did have one, but it's associated with a public hearing, so that's more of an appropriate time to talk about that. So we'll get that there. Anybody else that would want to talk that didn't fill out a card? Okay. If not, we'll go to, we have no action out of the executive session, so we will go to item eight is our consent agenda. Items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberation by the council. It's approved in the minutes, tick-tock policy, and a road closure for the community event hosted by the Jacksonville Community Arts Alliance. I think we have two of our board members here on that one. So if y'all have any questions on our agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nine is our quarterly financial report presented by Finance Director Roxanna Browley. This is the most exciting measure ever. It's about the finances of our city. So she and I have kindred hearts.
Okay. I appreciate this opportunity to come and present the financial report for September, which is the conclusion of fiscal year 2024. This presentation will provide key revenue and expenditure trends, along with a year-end status update on fund balance, cash and investments. And note, while this report does reflect the city's overall financial position, at the end of the fiscal year, revenues and expenditures will continue to adjust during our 60-day accrual period. And final results will come in March, when the auditor comes and makes an even more exciting presentation than this one. And as you can see up there on revenue, we've collected 37.8 million, which represents about 118% of our budget. And we have 38.7 million, which is about 97.8% of our expenditure budget. Some key revenue trends, adware and taxes, we collected six and a half million, or 98.5% of our budget. This is a 5.8 increase compared to the previous year. Sales tax, 3.3 million, or 97.5% of the budget. This is a slight decrease from last fiscal year, but with the last couple of months of the sales tax data, we are seeing sales tax trend in the more upward positive direction. Water sales, we've collected $3.6 million, representing 93% of the budget. This is a 5.9% decrease compared to last fiscal year. We had a very wet summer this year as compared to last year, which was much more dry. Sewer sales are up. That's mainly because we had the rate adjustments, which focused heavily on the sewer sewer side of things. Sanitation fees, we collected almost perfect as far as the budget's concerned, and this is a 5.7% increase over last year. Ambulance fees, 952,000, or 99% of the budget, showing a 24% increase over prior year. Hot taxes reached 102% of the budget, reflecting a 28% increase over prior year. And municipal court fees, collections of 522,000 fell short of budgeted expectations, but were increased just slightly, 0.8% over last fiscal year. As far as expenditures are concerned, in employee services, we spent 11.26 million, which is almost perfect with the budget for this category. Move on to some of the capital projects. This is the Series 2024 A COs. These bonds were issued to acquire firefighting and public safety equipment. These were the ones that we just sold in August, if you recall, and we already spent 2.95 million for two fire apparatuses. We still have a balance of about 1.15 million. The Series 2022 B certificates of obligation, these are for the streets projects, and of the 4.6 million, 1.7 has been spent so far, with the remaining balance of 2.6 million. The Jackson is complete, had one and a half million dollars came in just right at what we budgeted. Then the 2022 A certificates of obligation are for the Texas Water Development Board project to improve the city sanitary sewer system. A total of 5.9 was budgeted with 666,000 spent to date. Significant progress has been made on planning, design, environmental, and construction will be following. Have several parks projects. Butner Park fully complete at a budget of 280,000. Hazel Tilton Park had a budget just over 410,000, with 42,000 spent so far. And we are going to have to kind of reconsider the plans for this project. That's when it went out for bid, the bids were considerably higher than our budget. Lincoln Park, 400,000 budget with 113,000 spent and 282,000 left for future work. These projects are all an important part of enhancing our community amenities and ensuring enjoyment of our public spaces. Fund balance, as you can see, at the end of 2024, our fund balances reflect a strong financial position. The general fund ended with a balance of 5.2 million, which exceeds our target fund balance of maintaining a 20% of operating expenditures. Currently, this is showing 34.7% of expenditures. The utility fund concluded the fiscal year with an ending balance of 7.99 million. And our cash investments, the city's cash and investments valued at just over 22 million reflects a carefully considered balance between liquidity and safety, with 31.17% held in cash for immediate needs, and 49.9 allocated to the eligible investment pools. You can see this is very similar to where we were at the end of June. We spent down a little bit more. Less money comes in at the end of the fiscal year, more money goes out. Now in October, that's starting to reverse. Does anyone have any questions about the report? Thanks so much.
Thank you, Roxanna.
Thank you, Roxanna.
Our next item is to, item number 10, discuss and consider with possible action an optional addenda to lake lot leases. James?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as we've discussed over the last couple of meetings, we have something for you to consider this evening. We did discuss this at the workshop as well. I want to stress that this is strictly optional, but staff is proposing an optional lease addenda to the 99-year leases that may be held on or around the Lake Jacksonville. Some of those are inside the city limits and some of those being outside the city limits. And the reason for this, and our city clerk, who's not with us this evening, generally handles a lot of inquiries related to the transfers of these leases upon sales of lake homes. And one thing that's come to pass over the last couple of years is there are some lenders who are failing to want to lend on the existing terms on a lot of these 99-year leases. They're down to about 35 years in many cases, and so lenders are saying, thanks, but no thanks. You don't meet our underwriters restrictions. And so then they're forced to find another lender who may be able to do that. But the solution to that, and I want to thank our city attorney Brett Brewer, he did a ton of due diligence, a lot of that time spent with other city attorneys from across the state who deal with similar matters, was to come out with a 30-year rolling lease. So it'd have a 30-year term, and every year when you pay your lease payment, you just have 30 years again. It just continually resets. So it's essentially in perpetuity so long as you're in good standing with your lease. It would have an inside-the-city-limit annual payment due of $500 per year that is inclusive of the current $200 per year public safety fee, and an outside-of-the-city-limit rate of $1,000 with an annual inflationary provision at 3.5%. That's also inclusive of the public safety fee. Rental charge adjustments would be potentially up to every five years, but not more often than that, and capped at a 10% increase over the prior year. And in the event that the city does need the property for any reason, it would require the city to compensate and pay fair market value for the property. Again, this is strictly optional. People who are on the 99-year leases right now, those remain even when they expire. They go to a one-year rolling or revolving lease. However, you're going to have difficulty more than likely selling if you're down to that one year or even less than 30 years to anybody who needs lending. So this provides an opportunity for folks to opt into this lease or for potentially their new buyer to opt into this lease.
Very good. So I'll entertain a motion, and then we can discuss immediately.
Well, I'll make a, okay, go ahead.
Oh, you can. I'll make a motion that we approve the optional addenda to lake lot leases.
I have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McRae. Any discussion?
I do have one question. So if there's a sale on the property now, the the new purchaser would have the option of extending the 99-year lease or going to the new program? Is there strictly, still an optional mechanism even in the, in the, in case it was sold, in case it was sold?
That's correct. They could That's correct, they could assume the ninety-nine-year lease and the remaining term on that, it would not reset or extend to ninety-nine, but they would assume the remaining lease. However, the public safety fee would roll on at the two hundred dollars annually, so this is inclusive of that.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So if we had a cash buyer buying a current house out there, and there was eighteen years left on the current lease, and they didn't need financing, they may or may not, it's optional whether they would do it.
Strictly optional.
Totally optional, yeah.
Except for the two hundred dollar safety.
That's correct.
Correct.
Anything else?
I think we achieved the goal.
Nothing yet.
The, when it was brought to my attention, seven, eight years ago, I mean, it was just a realtor going, y'all've got leases that have thirty-five to forty years left on them, and our clients are starting to have questions asked from a financing standpoint. And this, um, all this does is give people that option of exercising it, and, you know, it's not complicated, it's not tedious, and it's pretty simple.
Pretty straightforward.
Straightforward, so.
Alright, we have a motion that is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eleven is to discuss and consider with possible action approving the second amendment to the chapter three eighty agreement with Lou Vey.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, in partnership with JEDCO, back on July twenty-second of two thousand and twenty, City Council authorized a tax rebate via chapter three eighty vehicle uh, for the construction of a two hundred thousand square foot or or greater manufacturing facility with, along with the creation of fifty jobs at a minimum investment of five million dollars of taxable value. For Lou Vey, they're the purchasers of that cyclical transfer that's currently with most of its operations in the twenty-two thousand block of North Bolton, I believe. That tax abatement, or rebate rather, was, uh, structured over six years, with the first three years being at seventy-five percent, and years four through six being at fifty percent. The first amendment was made March thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, and that changed the effective date or the commencement date of the rebate from December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two to January first of two thousand and twenty-five. And the second amendment, which is before you this evening, would again amend that commencement of the tax rebate date to January first, two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, a few weeks ago, Lou Vey did have a groundbreaking out at their facility at the Loop and South Bolton, so they're under construction on roughly, uh, two hundred thousand square foot, um, expansion of the existing fifty thousand that they've already built, it's tilt wall construction. Uh, Lou Vey is based out of Italy, and this is their U.S. headquarters, so we're hopeful that that will continue to have additional land there that they're already talking about, kind of a phase two even after this. I would say that this is very much in keeping, uh, in a good faith negotiations with them. There were a lot of unknowns that played into this date shifting several times, COVID being the largest and most out of their control, uh, in terms of supply chain and their need to expand in the United States.
Thank you for that expert motion.
You're welcome.
So I'll, uh, entertain a motion on that.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the second amendment to the chapter three eighty agreement with Lou Vey.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Tim, I'll, I mean, Rob Goen, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twelve is to discuss and consider with possible action awarding the contract for the relocation of city utilities required by the planned widening of U.S. Highway one seventy-five.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we've had several, uh, prerequisite actions on this particular item, but back in October of two thousand and twenty-three, council awarded a hundred and thou- a hundred and eleven thousand dollar design contract to SPI. And then bidding procurement and construction services award went to SPI, uh, for eighty-two five, August thirteenth of this year, and now we're at the point to ask for council's blessing on award of a contract to McKinney and Moore. They were the low bidder, you see the spread there, we were very blessed to receive eight bids, um, pursuant to the services from SPI and and our relationships, uh, we have locally here, and just getting the word out about the project. The bids were all generally clustered pretty tight, uh, we had one outlier there at the top, Canary Construction, but the low bidder, McKinney and Moore, has, uh, local ties, and I believe is even considering, uh, bringing their operation here permanently from a, from a business standpoint. But the low bid came in at just over one point three seven million dollars. That does include a two hundred thousand dollar owner's allowance, so there's basically two hundred thousand dollars factored into that for any kind of change orders that the city may seek to execute. You'll see there E E L P C, that stands for engineer's opinion of probable cost, and we came in about half a million dollars, a little more than four hundred thousand dollars, uh, below that. So that's always a good sign because we budgeted for the one point eight. Uh, the upper right-hand side of the screen there is just strictly texted, scheduled for their widening of U.S. one seventy-five, and this project's necessary to get city utilities out of state right away required for that expansion project, so that's the schedule of the section from CUNY to Jacksonville, showing a estimated completion date in the summer of two thousand and twenty-eight. This project, if awarded, would likely start, uh, first quarter two thousand and twenty-five and take six to eight months to complete.
Very good. So I will entertain a motion on that item, item twelve.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the bid from McKinney and Moore for the utility locations for the U.S. one seventy-five project.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number thirteen is a public hearing to hear and receive input regarding requested zone change from A single family to B one and two family, located at nine oh two Austin Street, described as lot one A, block ninety-nine, S A and three A, north one-half of one and two, and W fifteen feet of three Jacksonville property, alley two 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 eight three zero zero zero.
It's a long caption.
It is.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, this is a zoning request to take, uh, property at this, uh, southeast corner of Fort Worth Street and Austin Street from A single family to B one and two family, you see the table there of your zoning uses, so it's just rationing it down generally one, one on the residential spectrum. It did go before the Planning and Zoning Commission on October fifteenth of this year. It was unanimously approved by the members present, there was a quorum present, but it was only three members. And, uh, they unanimously approved it, this lot about two years ago, um, there was a su- there was a structure on it deemed substandard by the zoning board of adjustment. Uh, action was taken by the city to have that structure demolished, and now we're kind of in the redevelopment stage of that property, so I think it's overall really good for the neighborhood to see a dilapidated structure removed and now reinvestment uh, in the neighborhood. I believe there's a representative of the applicant here this evening, should the council have any questions, and he may have filled out a card.
Yes. So at this point, I'll open up the public hearing to hear anyone that wants to, uh, speak in favor of or against, and yeah, this will be your time, Mr. Hunter Townsend, if you'll just come and, uh, state your names and.
I'm Hunter Townsend, I'm representing the buyer on the property, I'm also one of the contractors on the bill that she proposes to do on the property. And just to speak about the buyer, she also is the one, uh, I'm sure you are familiar with the property on Nature's in Dallas, behind Chick-fil-A. So it's the same people involved in that property as the property that, um, will be nine oh two Austin Street. So she plans to do the same exact thing as she did there, bring new construction, um, that's just what she plans to do, so I think it'd be great for the neighborhood.
You think the, uh, parents will be somewhat like the ones on the Nature Street?
So on Nature Street, those are two twos, uh, duplexes, and there's two different duplexes, so we had to split the lot. This one's just gonna be one, and it'll be three two.
And they will actually face
So they'll be, uh,
Fourteenth Street.
So there'll be a driveway on the Austin Street side, and then there'll be a driveway on the other side.
Okay.
So, kinda like the, uh, Nakadocha Street property. I don't know if y'all are familiar with that one, there's a duplex there.
Yeah.
Gotcha, yeah, so, yes, sir.
Okay.
Sort of on the loop.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Question?
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come and speak in favor of or against, now's your time. Seeing and hearing none, we will close our public hearing and go to item B, to discuss and consider with possible action approval of an ordinance granting the requested zone change, so I'll entertain a motion there.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance granting the zone change.
We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray, any discussion? Anything to have, we're all good with it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries, thank you, Mr. Townsend, appreciate it. Item number fourteen is to discuss and consider with possible action an exception to the lake rules to allow for a pier to be sixty-five feet from the shoreline with a depth of five feet, located at ten thirty-seven, County Road thirty-one oh eight, City of Jacksonville.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, these are somewhat, um, common, I would say, I think we've done five or six in the last several years, but in the event of the depth of the water at fifty feet from the shoreline at the lake, um, at normal pool elevation, which is four hundred and twenty-two, is less than five feet, our city building official may permit a structure to extend outward from the shoreline past the fifty-foot, um, distance, subject to three provisions, that's one that it complies with the building requirements, uh, as part of the lake rules and regs. But number two is the one that we're here to discuss this evening, and that's that the Jacksonville City Council by a majority vote of a quorum present for a duly called or scheduled city council meeting determines that the proposed structure will not have an unreasonable or adverse impact upon the use and enjoyment of the adjoining lake lots and any approved improvements thereupon. And, uh, regardless of council's finding, at no point can a structure be built, uh, at a distance further than seventy-five feet from the shoreline. And so you see kind of a mock-up there and the location map. Um, the mock-up shows that at fifty feet, the water depth was three and a half feet, at sixty feet, it was four and a half, and at sixty-five, that's when they hit the magical fif- uh, five-foot depth. Uh, it does seem generally consistent with boat houses and structures in that area, specifically the one immediately to the south identified on that survey.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on the pier at sixty-five feet.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve this request to, uh, to let the pier go out to sixty-five feet.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit, any, uh, discussion? And like James said, that's, uh, when you don't have enough depth, we have a provision to make it work for a boat or a boat house or whatever, so, that's great. If no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider with possible action approving a replat of lot five R one and seven R one of the Red Bird Lane subdivision.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, this is generally considered an administrative plot, it only affects two lots and does not create any lots. Um, however, pursuant to our general practice, it is city-owned land, leased land, it's, uh, uh, near the lake, but not, uh, lakefront. There's just a minor boundary line shift between lots seven R one and five R ones, they're currently lots seven R and five R. I did my best to kind of zoom in on that very minor, um, change in the upper right-hand side of the screen there, it's changing the westernmost boundary. Uh, or it's the north, it's the boundary line that goes east-west, but it's just shifting it up to the north just slightly on the west side of the property.
Okay.
Very inconsequential.
Right, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the replat.
Have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number sixteen is to approve the certified tax rule as presented by the Cherokee Central Appraisal District.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, of course, as we're developing our budget, we get different versions of the proposed and kind of estimated, if you will, levy throughout that practice, as different properties are in different states of protest. Uh, we did finally get the certified levy amount of six point six million dollars. Uh, this will generate about an additional, or not about, but an exactly thirty-eight thousand nine thirty more than we budgeted, uh, the levy from the taxes to be, so this is a good thing for the city, but uh, it's just a practice we have every year to do a final approval of this.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the certified tax rule.
Uh, make a motion, we approve the Cherokee Central Appraisal District certified tax rule.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit to approve the certified tax rule.
Second.
Second by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number seventeen is to discuss and consider with possible action authorizing the city manager to enter into a financing contract with First American Equipment Finance for the purchase of a Vector Impact Combination Sewer Cleaning Truck.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as you were the finance committee, which consists of yourself and the mayor pro tem, the finance director, assistant city manager, and myself, we met last Thursday, as we do generally quarterly, and we, this was one item where you took a look at, was an opportunity to finance the Vector. We do have this budgeted as a cash pay item in this year's budget, and we can certainly proceed with that, however, we just looked at a more strategic way of, um, charting down the path of the purchase. Um, the current vector that we have that will be selling, uh, pri- private party, um, when we take delivery of this Vector truck, was purchased via a five-year capital lease. Annual payments were about sixty-five thousand dollars. We went out and asked for, uh, proposals for financing the new rig, we received two at an opening held on November fourth. You see the rates there, based on government finance at five and three-quarters, First American Equipment at four point five-six, both structured over sixty-month or five annual payments. Um, one was at ninety-eight and ninety-six respectively, based on those interest rates. We're asking, um, you know, as we discussed at the finance committee meeting, our investments are yielding a little over five percent right now collectively, and so cash in the bank does us well, this would definitely stabilize, uh, and be a little bit more budget neutral for us. And we're asking that you authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into this finance agreement with First American Equipment Finance at a rate, at or below the proposed four point five-six, it fluctuates day to day. We actually did see the Fed take a quarter point off interest rates, uh, I think a day or two after this bid opening was conducted. So we would hope that when we need to actually execute the agreement to purchase the equipment, when we take delivery, it may be just a little bit, uh, below this originally submitted four, uh, and a half percent. May not there be no prepayment penalty on the note.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to negotiate with First American Equipment Finance for the financing of the Vector truck.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mayor Gallit. Uh, uh, Councilwoman Mindy, not Mayor, Mindy Gallit. Yeah, I was thinking of, I had, I had a quick question.
Seems like she's out there all by herself.
Yes, she is. Uh, you said that they, the, they bid four point five-six, but then when we, uh, initial the contract, that could go lower, but it's not a fluctuating interest.
It'll be fixed rate once we end the agreement.
Fixed rate once we go, okay, sure.
Right, any other question? In simple interest, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eighteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approval of an agreement with Stokes and Associates for engineering services for the Double Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade and expansion project, TWDB project number seven three nine five five.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, we do have representatives here this evening for the next three items, they're all generally, uh, revolve around the wastewater treatment plant and its expansion, so a high-level overview is that we're under, about to undergo a project to take its daily treatment capacity from two point nine million gallons to five point eight. That's, uh, exactly a doubling of its capacity, so we'll essentially pr- produce a mirror image of the current plant and upgrade the existing facilities to boot. And we're looking to engage Stokes and Associates pursuant to all the documentation that's already been submitted and approved by the Texas Water Development Board, along with the budgeted number of the just over a million dollars that you see on the screen there. Um, among a long litany of things, um, in the actual agreement, I picked out just a couple, there are the high-level ones, they'll be responsible for the discharge permit amendment to the TCQ, various, uh, stages of environmental services, property acquisition and surveying, uh, coordination, and then preliminary and final design. So they'll produce a preliminary design, various stages of percentage of, uh, plan completion for review by, um, staff, and then final design to include procurement, construction, phase services, so they'll help us with the bidding, the procurement of a qualified contractor, and then construction phase inspection services. You see a preliminary project schedule as submitted as part of the Texas Water Development Board, uh, application packet. I know we've been talking about this for years, uh, and it's definitely a, a need, this is the heart of the city's entire sanitary sewer system, and it's the only wastewater treatment plant which we operate. Uh, but you see there at the top, starting with tonight's action to close the necessary loans, and this work order with Stokes and Associates, all the way through an anticipated construction completion preliminarily projected at June of two thousand and twenty-eight, so, long-term project, much needed.
Okay. You've heard that explanation, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion. Steve, I, sorry, Steve Wick of Stokes and Associates is here, if you have any specific questions, Randall's also a subject matter expert on the plant itself, so, any questions, feel free.
I'm not smart enough to ask.
I know, exactly.
But this is only the plant, this is nothing getting to the plant.
Generally, yes.
The getting to the plant comes.
That was the five point nine that's already been issued, that's one of the major trunk lines that ultimately gets stuff to the plant, and, uh, there's other projects in the works, so. I will make a motion that we approve an agreement with Stokes and Associates for engineering services for the Double Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant upgrade.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Tim McGray, any, any, uh, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nineteen is to discuss and consider all matters incident to re- and related to the issuance and sale of city Item number nineteen is to discuss and consider all matters incident and related to the issuance and sale of City of Jacksonville, Texas, combination tax and surplus and sewer system revenue certificates of obligation, series twenty twenty-four B., including the adoption of an ordinance authorizing issuance of such certificates.
Sure. Mayor, City Council, quick lead-in before I turn it over to some of the council here this evening. There's uh, I've made it on one slide here, slide uh, this slide on the screen entails the information for items nineteen and twenty. Uh however, you will need separate action on nineteen as opposed to twenty. But item nineteen is for the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the certificates of obligation to fund the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant that I just discussed or described. On January ninth of this year, council did um approve a resolution authorizing staff to request financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board. Later that summer, TWDB did approve the city's financial assistance request. And then September tenth, at that meeting, the city council approved a resolution of the intent to issue certificates of obligation to fund the city's portion of the related debt to these improvements. Item twenty, which is the really exciting part, this is uh over an eleven million dollar project. Um but thanks to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and Texas Water Development Board, uh over eight million dollars of that's gonna be principal forgiveness, and we'll just be responsible for the debt on about three and a half million. So with that, I'll turn it over to John Martin of Hilltop Securities.
Thanks, James. John Martin with Hilltop. Uh Michael Martin, my partner and son. Um Casey Byrd from Norton Rose Fulbright is with us this evening. I'm the bond attorney. Thanks for having us this evening. We have great news, a great overview from James there in terms of what's going on. The first part is, just like any other certificate of obligation, you all done in terms of where you all have borrowed recently for fire equipment and that sort of thing, same type deal, except rather than offering these bonds in the open market, an underwriter or a financial institution buys them, the Water Development Board buys them through their loan funds um where they sell it out of a lot, much larger uh pot of funds that are uh consist of bond funds, uh federal money, and so forth. So this is through their Clean Water State Revolving uh Fund. And so that first part is just the CO part that's issued uh to uh the Water Development Board, then the, as James said, the principal forgiveness, which is huge. Uh an eight million one hundred and fifty-one thousand is uh going to show you there on the principal forgiveness. The TW uh, the Texas Water Development does take an origination fee uh for when they do these uh SRF loans, uh sixty-two thousand, it's about one point three, one point seven five percent. Uh the available monies for the project's total combined eleven million five sixty-seven. Cost of issuance budget is about seventy-seven thousand dollars, and those are detailed in the back page. The uh next page is, is uh really illustrates what a great deal this is for the City of Jacksonville, really excited, excited to present this. You can see that uh your existing payments in the second column there are running about eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and this is just what is paid by, through your enterprise fund, the water, just for water and sewer. This does not include tax-supported debt, right? So um or anything supported by JEDCO or anything like that. So um this uh, so you see eight forty-three, and then what happens is your new debt comes on, you see the interest rate here. Please look at those interest rates. It's crazy.
Yeah.
So ranging from one point seven seven percent to two point six three percent, and that averages out to a true interest cost of two point three one percent. So City of Jacksonville citizens are getting uh eleven point six million dollars for two point three one percent, really. I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable. So um part of it zero, and then just the three, two point three percent on just the three and a half million dollars. So it's a and when you figure out the overall cost of borrowing, it's somewhere in that one percent range. So great deal for the city. Uh we'll be increasing the debt service payments uh about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and so you'll be at roughly a million dollars a year debt service payments just from water and sewer type debt. So again, it's a great deal for the City of Jacksonville. The last page there uh details the cost of issuance budget uh with a normal fee for the certificates of obligation. You see it's broken down with bond council and financial budget. LF stands for the loan forgiveness piece. Uh that's just, we don't charge full boat, if you will, on the loan forgiveness part because there's not any debt really involved, but there is some review, and it's still, we still have to apply for those monies, apply for those funds, so there is some work to it. And then the standard attorney general's fee, paying agent fees, escrow agent, QSO and so forth, and uh as Roxanna knows, when uh when we close these issues and everything left comes back to the city, you can either stick it in your INS fund or um and apply towards the project, your choice. Uh Ms. Byrd is here. Have you got anything you want to add?
No, I can do that.
Okay. She's here in case you have any legal questions, so happy to answer any questions on item nineteen.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
There. Um there's specific language that needs to be read for item nineteen and twenty in the motion.
Okay. I'll, I'll do it. So uh on item nineteen, I will entertain a motion to approve. We already done that. No, I'm gonna read the motion. Here's the motion.
Yeah.
I move to adopt an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Jacksonville, Texas, combination tax and surplus water and sewer system revenue certificates of obligation, series twenty twenty-four B., and resolving other matters incident and relating to the issuance and sale of such certificates of obligation. So we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second by Councilwoman Tim McGray. Any discussion on that item? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twenty is to discuss and consider all matters incident and related to the principal forgiveness agreement with the state, Texas Water Development Board in connection with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, including the adoption of a resolution approving the principal forgiveness agreement and an escrow agreement related thereto.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, pretty straightforward. This is the, this is where the rubber meets the road on the forgiveness, and this we definitely want you to pass for the uh eight point one
Okay.
uh million dollars of forgiveness.
So I'll entertain a motion. Uh okay, I'll make that motion. I move to adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the principal forgiveness agreement and an escrow agreement between the Texas Water Development Board and the City of Jacksonville, Texas, and resolving other matters incident and related to the principal forgiveness agreement. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second. We have a second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twenty-one is uh open forum for Mayor and Council. Anybody have a
I don't know if I could say that. Did we just borrow eleven million dollars at a little over two percent and put it in the bank at five percent?
And all we have to pay back through million of it.
That sounds like, that's the best deal I've heard.
Sounds like a great monopoly game, this.
I don't know, really.
No, I've, I've
Something seems wrong there.
Yeah, we do.
Can we have more?
Anything else? Nothing. Nothing. City managers report?
Just, I'll make it real brief tonight. Um two, two items, and then a couple just verbal updates, but uh back at the February two thousand and twenty-four meeting, council did authorize the police department to submit an application for some ballistic shields. This was a program offered by the governor's office after the tragedy in Uvalde. We ended up asking for, I think, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of assistance or for twenty, the purchase of twenty ballistic shields. We were notified last week that we got funded one seventeen. So that'll get us seventeen of these shields, fully funded, no match required, again, from the office of the governor. So in light of uh some of our other grant projects, that wait time between February and November, um all those longer than we wanted is is relatively quick turnaround, so we'll get those ordered and uh reimbursed. And the Boating Access Grant Project is officially underway. Our Public and Community Services folks uh tore down the three structures out there lakeside last week, and the keys for the project are really kind of officially in heartbeat construction uh hands now, and so we're just looking forward to closely monitoring that. There will be fuel service interruptions. We put out a press release on that. We've done some Facebook announcements and push that out to everybody who subscribes for the Lake uh newsletter, and we'll be back hopefully in the next couple of months with a really really top-notch uh state-of-the-art fueling system, faster pumps, all these things to address concerns we've had over the, over the last couple of years with that. Uh want to thank all of our veterans. There was a wonderful veteran stay program put on at Buckner Park today by the Garden Club. Uh Chief Williams, I think he's our only veteran on staff that's here with us this evening. Uh but we have a lot of our police officers and firefighters, our veterans, as well as several spread through other city departments, so we uh, we appreciate that so much. Thanks doesn't go far enough. And trash is always top of mind. Um it seems it's, it's very, we get a lot of calls about trash, and so just want to let you know Thanksgiving will interrupt your trash schedule. Uh there will be no trash service curbside residential on Thursday of Thanksgiving. Thursday pickup will be conducted on Friday, and Friday pickups will be conducted on Saturday. I'll leave you with that. Yes.
That's good. If that's it, we will stand adjourned at six forty-eight.
Didn't get a text. That means that Michael's got burgers, so.
Oh, there you go.
Run down there and
Wonder what the line's looking like.
I don't know. I can text him.